...City Council meeting for the city of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kirk Cresspin. We have the honor and privilege today to have a work session right before this meeting. So I apologize for being a little bit late, but we have a lot to cover. We had an individual here tonight. His name is Sam Pleit from SORSA, which is the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Service Risk Sharing Association. Yes. So it's a little bit big of a word, but basically SORSA is our insurance liability company for the city of Lamar, and they represent multiple municipalities throughout the state of Colorado. It was nice to have this work session. We scheduled it mainly for our new council member, but it's great to have this once a year to have a review of everything that the city council does. What's interesting is most people don't realize the limitations that we can also have as a city council. Certain things that we cannot do, certain requirements and liabilities and risks that we have. So it's always great to have Sam show up and give us this training session to remind us all of our responsibilities and duties as city council members. We're representing you as a community, and we're trying to do the best job we can. And it's a great reminder to keep us in check and remind us that we're all working together to try to make our community better by governing better. So we thank you for attending tonight and giving us this work session. And again, I do apologize for the delay in our meeting, but with that said, we will move on to our meeting. Tonight, we have Mr. Latier here to do our invocation.
Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, I just thank you for your presence, being here and in this place and with all of our city leaders. Lord, I pray that you would just pour out your peace upon us, Lord, and just lead us into your direction and guidance, God, as you fill us with your wisdom and your plans and your purposes, God. I just thank you for what you're doing in our community and in the lives of our community, and we just give you the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Counselor number two, yes. Would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:05 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Shay Lamotta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kirk Cresspin.
Here.
David Zavala.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Brent Bates.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. I did not see any changes for the agenda tonight. Did anyone else have any changes for the agenda?
I don't.
No? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, where we have our minutes and commission board minutes as well as the payment of bills and licenses. So do we have any changes for the consent agenda? I didn't see any. Okay. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Save it.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Or on any item that's not? Seeing none, we will move on to the next section, which is our reports and correspondence. First item is our city treasurer's report. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I wanted to give an update. The mayor and Rob did a presentation over in Montro...
Montrose.
No, Montrose, right. For our DOLA grant for the wastewater treatment plant design and engineering phase, and they did a fantastic job. We want to give a big thank you to Shane White, our on-call engineer from JVA, that also threw in an assist and did a fantastic job. I have reached out to Tara Marshall at DOL and haven't gotten an answer back on if there was any feedback, so we should be hearing soon on that one. So we're excited to get an answer on that one and move forward. There's a few others that we're waiting to hear back on. The one that we turned into the lower Arkansas Valley area on agency aging for the senior center. There had a change in directors over that group, and it's been delayed a little bit, so we should have heard by now. But so we're still waiting on that one as well. So then I just wanted to report that I did get the draft audit finally this week, about the middle of last week, and so I've been going through that and going to get that back to the auditories as quickly as I can so we can get the final audit done as well. So that's what we've been working on in my department. So that was all I had unless you have questions for me.
I don't have any. Thank you.
You said that the one grant that for the senior center with them not getting back, is that going to hinder anything?
You know, I don't think so. I anticipate that we'll get about the same amount of funding we did last year, which was around $25,000. That's kind of what they threw out there as a number. So the city has a pretty big match for that senior center anyway, so we'll just continue on with city funding. Their fiscal year end was June 30th, so we usually hear, you know, in June sometime on that one, but because of the change of directors, I think that that's been delayed a little bit. So but we'll continue on as is, so.
Okay. If we have no other questions for the treasurer, we will move on to the city clerk's report. Linda?
Our May sales and use tax collected in June was $434,348.34, which was up 4.89% or $20,250.91 from 2023. Our year-to-date collections were $2,80468.7, which is up 8.91% or $229,088.71 from 2023. And that's all I have at this time unless there's any questions.
Well, I think it's important to point out that, you know, we are still getting year-to-year was 8.91. We are still having an increase, which considering our economic times, that's still pretty good for our community, I believe. So thank you for giving that report. Good growth, anyway.
That's great.
All right. With that said, do we have any questions for the clerk?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Okay. I know we haven't had a lot of coffee lately, but July, we'll have three days, July 17th, 24th, and 31st. Daylight Donuts, Brewin' Others, and Rivals. So come on down, buy you a cup of coffee, and if they have donuts there, I'll even buy you a donut. And we'll talk about what's happening in the city. We've had a lot of things going on, and I'm really excited about, you know, opportunities for my kids and for everything else around here. It's been a great, great last few weeks. And speaking of, Friday with the Force will happen on July 19th, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It's at Willow Creek Park by the pool. And projects, I'm going to go down each one of the departments and give you my top two projects that we'll be working on. I know the police, we're going to have an item here later, but we have increased our applicants through, and we're going to increase our applicant through some, probably some creative incentives, but we have an uptick in number of applicants. I think we're going to see some additional prospects coming up through the system, and I think that that's one of the things that we've been working on lately, and I think with the new chief coming in, we're going to have a lot of success in this area, because I can tell he's really interested in increasing our manning. So Fire Department, fireworks, as we know, we saw here recently, the fireworks show itself, the one that's sponsored and run by the Fire Department, was a great success. We did not burn anything down. We had a lot of people out there that were excited, and I tell you, the kids underneath with their glow sticks and all the ones, it was a really neat... You know, I've been in some of the biggest ones anywhere, just, you know, Washington DC, and I sat underneath those trees where, you know, zero gravity chair and looking up at all, and this was a really neat experience. So I wanted to say thank you to our Fire Department, and for putting those things on, and I really appreciate it. Let's see, ladder testing went on. So our two ladder trucks plus all of our ground ladders is going on this week. In Public Works, we have our code enforcement cleanups they've been focusing on, and this week there'll be quite a few of them that they, you know, when they list up and they show that there's been a long time and we have to clean up some places because of code enforcement, that this week we're going to do a lot of those. There's a new sidewalk we're working on across from the community building, right at that parking lot, so we're also working on that. Parks and Rec, where our archery range development and planning is still ongoing. The Windmill Tournament, 34th, July, let's see, 12th to the 14th, is that correct? Believe so. The community development, as everybody's noticed, I know that we've made a lot of promises, but Arby's is ongoing and a lot of, lot of progress out there. You've seen the slabs out there, the internal plumbing, and so I'm telling you, I haven't had, I'm glad I didn't have to go to Lyman and bring back a lot of sandwiches to all those people I promised some Arby's sandwiches, but we're going to have them. We're going to have them soon, too.
If I could just take a moment to say that I had a conversation with the general contractor and the manager on site, and he was saying, out of all the places he's worked in, this staff here at the city of Lamar has been wonderful to work with, been very accommodating, and they've been very helpful in keeping this project moving. So I wanted to give kudos to our Public Works Department as well as our building and our Community Development Department, Building Inspector, and all of those, because they did point that out, and I told them I would share that with the council. So thank you all for your hard work on it.
So this next one, I don't want to steal the thunder from somebody who's an LPI, but I know the corporate cup is coming and bigger and better than ever. So anyway, I'll let him talk about that later. Let's see, IT, our camera program is still ongoing. They just finished the Fire Department, and Airport's next. Our security audit is coming soon, within a week. I don't want to tell you exactly when it's happening, so. Library, the MIT Spokes Program, which is, has coding, chemistry of concrete, physics, today, or tomorrow will be the last day, but this is also the last week of the reading program. So a lot of stuff still happening on in the library. There's kids everywhere and lots of books. So miscellaneous, are there any questions or anything else that we can have questions on that might want to address? I know I've addressed a few today already, so if you have any additional ones, I'm all ears.
I've got a question, Rob. Last meeting I asked where we are at with our consultant, Indian Tribe, where we were working with that.
Right, and I-
He was working for the city.
I will, I did look this up, and I did come up to the decision to let you know a little bit of the information. As far as the situation right now, we did not meet our goal that we had wanted to do as far as number of jobs, and we did make contacts. We have met a lot of additional people, and there's still some possibilities out there, but I believe that the one-year program did not meet our expectations, and as sad as I am to say, this is my recommendation, probably not to be using the same person again.
Thank you. So we did go through the process, and that one year did lapse. He did not complete the contract, so he was not paid the other half, and we did not renew it. We have that discussion, should we bring it back to the council to renew or not, and with Rob's decision and our recommendation as well as Ann Murray's, it was decided not to bring it back to the council for renewal, so. Is that correct?
Yep, that is correct.
Yeah, we were talking about that. Thank you very much. All right.
Looks like posts are going up for the dog park.
Yes. So you have some progress going on, and we will, it's an ongoing situation. I do have a list of things that will be going up at that location, so we're going to be putting some turf up there, some watering, and of course, over the next two years, we plan on improving them every year, but it'll be fun. I think, I think they're going to be really appreciated, too.
Okay, any other questions for the city administrator? I don't have any.
On the Friday with the Force, Force, sorry, the people, the community come out and also meet the new chief of police, ask questions.
Yes, I'm sure he would appreciate a meeting as many people want to come see.
Thank you.
Okay. With no other questions for the city administrator, we'll move on to reports and correspondence from the council. Start on the left, Joe.
Oh, I just got a short, quick one from the golf course, and that's really about it. The first one, they just finished up with their July 4th tournament, which was actually held on the 6th. Bob Haney said that it was successful. They had 18 teams out there, and it went well, and the team from Lahuna won the tournament. It's like, oh, okay. Second one is they've got another one coming up here on July 20th, 21st, and that's called the Club Championships. You've got to be a member of the club in order to join that one there. You know, you've got to be a local or, I mean, not local, but a member. There was a water main break over there on the golf course, and my hat's off to the city crews, because that happened very Monday during that rainstorm. I saw backhoes out there, and they were digging that place up and fixing it between T-Box five and six, you know, there, and they did a great job putting that thing back together. The fifth one there is the elk shed finally got fixed on their shed garage overhead electric doors they did were inoperable for about a year. So the elks finally got that burger fixed, and all the sheds are operational and all spots are taken, so there's nothing left open for cart rentals. And the last but not least is their Angel Open is going to be coming up hosted by Lamar Area Hospice, and that's going to be happening on August the 17th. That one fills up quick, and that is very popular amongst the locals, not only the locals, but I know last year we had some teams come down clear from Denver to join this thing, so it's pretty popular. It's good for a good cause, so it fills up quick. So if you've got some teams out there for the public, you know, please contact Ron Reedy or somebody there from the local hospice, and they can get you signed up and get you guys taken care of. And that's about it. The entry board has no meetings, and we don't have anything for the planning and zoning.
Okay. Did you have any meetings yet, Shayla?
Haven't had my meetings yet, but I look forward to sharing something soon.
Okay. Jerry?
Public Safety Board, we approved everybody, so we will have all the members on there on the 18th of July's, our meeting from 4:00 to 5:00 at the library, and we look forward to having Rob and the new chief and the fire chief there so we can go over things and what you guys expect of the Public Safety Board.
Okay. David?
No, I don't have nothing at the moment, but I'd like to, like Joe said, the city employees, and I'd just like, like to appreciate them because them being on call just about any time. I had also a water break between May 5th and 6th where I live, and they were there on Sunday, early Sunday morning, were getting ready to leave town, and they were getting their job done there, and I'd like just to appreciate on what they do, and even on the weekends when they're off and on the call, and just like to appreciate what they do for us.
Tell them right now.
Hey. Have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Brent?
Like Rob alluded to earlier, the corporate cup is coming up on the 24th through 27th. All of the team spots are filled. However, we are still looking for a few food trucks. Something we implemented last year was having food trucks at the events. So if you'd like to reach out to Martha Baird Alvarez, the Main Street Manager, her office number is 719-336-1445, and she will get you lined up. This is also an event that we accept spectators at, would love to see some city council members and employees out there and the public. Come out, watch, enjoy yourselves, eat some food. The 24th and 25th will be at the ball fields, Yellow and Green Field, starting at about 5:30. Friday will be at the Northgate Park, and Saturday is all day at Northgate as well. So that is it for LPI. Last thing I can mention this before our event, Southeast Colorado Cancer Initiative's first annual Fight Night fundraiser will be on the 20th from 5:30 to 10:00 at the Pocket Park. Come out, listen to some music, eat some food, and just socialize with the community and stand up there and support our fighters and our survivors and remember those who've passed from cancer. That's all I got.
Okay. And as for me, I know we'll have the Lamar Light and Power Board meeting tomorrow afternoon. We did not have our meeting today because Rob and I were both busy with Prowers Medical. We generally will have that the first meeting Monday of each month, but we both were not available today, so we'll have that next month. Couple of items that I would like to point out is as far as the fireworks display, the Lamar Fire Department did a wonderful job, and the volunteers on that display, and I've received a lot of comments saying how wonderful it was. I know we were very fortunate. There were some cities down the valley that were not able to have that this year, so it was great for us to be able to do that this year. So thank them for all their, their work, and while we were all picnicking and enjoying the day, they were out there getting things ready for this big event. The other part is, Rob had kind of alluded to our request earlier today, and I just wanted to point this out. One of the items that Rob and I had talked about and some of the council members had talked about was the fireworks that are going on around town. I know it's a nuisance for many of us, but the reason why I'm pointing this out is because it is something that the council is aware of. It's very difficult to manage on a staffing side. There were some requests that we create certain ordinances to find people, to find, you know, to do certain things, but I wondered, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we had asked Rob to do some investigating as far as what were the actual ordinances that are in place, and there are multiple ordinances that are currently in place for these illegal fireworks or for fireworks that are being shot off at this time after the 4th of July or before the 4th of July. So it's not a difficulty of the council not acting or reacting. It's not a difficulty of us not having the certain laws in place. The difficulty is having the police staffing and the ability to enforce these things, because as we all know, it only takes two seconds for somebody to run outside, light a firecracker, and run back into their home. By the time the neighbor calls on it and the police arrive, there's nobody around. I was reading an article earlier, and I was actually speaking with somebody earlier who pointed out that Arapahoe County had, I believe it was 785 is what I read after I had looked at it, 700 to 800 different calls per day during, after the 4th of July, and of those, zero citations have been given because they just have, do not have the ability to do so. Even in the city of Denver, I read there was around 1,200 calls per day in the city of Denver in only 57 over the last week as far as citations are concerned. It makes it very difficult when we're trying to manage these things. It's on and on our system. So I just want to reiterate this because I don't want the community to think that the council is not aware of it and that we're not willing to take action. It's just our hands are very limited, it's very difficult to do. So next year, we're going to look at some different potential opportunities. I did read where some of the communities are creating a specific hotline for fireworks complaints, and they're doing that for the reason because their other, the 911 dispatch call line is getting overwhelmed during the 4th of July or after the 4th of July with multiple calls complaining about fireworks. We don't want that to happen. We don't want to take away from our regular police work by trying to address these fireworks issues, but I think we'll talk about that in the future over the next year, and hopefully we can get some more actions to take for the future. But that's all I wanted to say on that portion of it. Aside from that, we will move on to the rest of our council meeting. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for temporary modification of premise for the Buzzards Roots to host an all-day music festival. So this is one of those situations where we will move into a public hearing, and it does have a different process engaged with that. So to start off, yes?
No. The packet is in front of you.
They do have an updated packet that they handed out to everybody, so all the council members should have that. Do we have a motion to move into the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. With this public hearing, this is, as I said, a retail liquor fermenting bolt beverage license application for an event for an all-day music festival. So we'll start off with reviewing the staff information. We'll start with the city clerk. Was everything published according to you?
Everything was published onsite and in the newspaper by June 27th.
Okay, and have you had a chance to review everything, Lance?
From what I can tell, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. And then as far as the police, since we didn't have the chief, do we have a representative from the police that reviewed it?
And yes, we were able to review it. The agreement granting that you have a long history of cooperation with the county and caring for the citizens.
And we haven't had any issues in the past with?
No significant issues.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the staff before we move on? From the council?
Questions?
Okay, we'll move on to the applicant presentation. Would you like to present what you're requesting today, or would you like to say anything on the application?
Oh, I can if need to.
Well, it's just your opportunity if you'd like to come up. It just makes it a little easier for you to explain what you're requesting.
Here's my appearance. I just found out of a little emergency project, but we haven't done a road jam. Oh, Jay Gruber, 103 South Third is where I live. I'm always at the other corner on Main Street, one business or the other, but we haven't done a road jam for, I don't know, five or six years, and I'm still not sure that I'm ready for it, but everybody else has talked me into it, so I guess we're going to do the same as we had, probably seven bands or something. We're not supplying enough food this time. We're getting some food trucks to help us with it so we don't have to do quite as much.
And security will be the same and everything?
Yeah, same chain link fence. We donated all of our concrete tires to the city after the last one, so I guess they'll get them to us.
All right. Any questions for the applicants before we move forward?
Are the food trucks going to be serving the entire time food is being served?
That's kind of up to them, but I would imagine so. We're kind of going to incorporate them in with the fence.
Okay. Any other questions?
And you said your staff is tip certified, Jay.
You know, our main staff is, so anybody serving alcohol, we'll, we'll have to have a few temporary help, you know, for the gate and different stuff, security, but anybody serving alcohol will be.
That's tip certified.
Jay, I got a question. I can see here on the map that the cones will be set up, the lengthwise of your building, is that correct? The cones for people can't drive up and down the street?
Right.
Now, is the fence off area going to be that big as well or not?
Yes.
It'll be that big as well?
Yeah.
Okay. That's my one question.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
All right.
So the next item that we'll do is to open the floor. We'll start off with opening the floor to anybody that would like to speak in opposition of this. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak in opposition? Of course, when we open the floor to the public, you have three minutes each to do so. That'll be at the discretion of the council. Can you state your name and address, please?
Good evening. I'm Galen Burnett, 800 South Sixth Street, Lamar, Colorado. The information I'll be giving you tonight is from the Denver Post earlier this year. You are familiar that we do have a governor named Paulus, and he says his top priority is health and safety, and he's working with different ways that to keep our self, our state's self. But each one of us have a responsibility, you guys as viewers, to be representing the people out in our, in our district, in our areas, in our wards. And we need to be trying to keep down liquor from becoming a problem in our society and in our community. And so the State of Pneology, I won't pronounce that one right, Outcomes Workshop, has laid out four strategies to lessen the impact of excessive drinking. They say we need to reduce the density of businesses selling alcohol. We need to raise alcohol taxes. Third, we need to limit the hours when alcohol can be sold, and fourth, increase the liability for selling alcohol to someone who's underage. That's what we can do to help control this, to not allow it get, get out of hand. When we, when we don't keep a close tie upon this, a close view upon what's happening, we don't, we allow these things to become a problem. I noticed in the testimony that- I noticed in the testimony that, that there wasn't any significant problems. There is always some problems. We need to realize that there are problems. After we testified the last time, I was told by one of the other people here in our city, yes, that the city has had problems with other liquor licenses. But as I said, we need to make it a top priority. You guys are the ones who can do the, do the things to, to stop the problems, to mitigate the situations. Raquel Garcia, a member of Colorado Behavioral Health Administration, she says that we have allowed alcohol to creep into every segment of our society. She says, "I think in Colorado, we've been irresponsible. I don't want that to be said about the city of Lamar." We are being responsible. Colorado has recorded higher than average rates of alcohol-related deaths than the country as a whole since 2009. That's 15 years. We've had, Colorado has the sixth highest rate in 19, I mean, excuse me, in 2021. And that causes us problems.
I'll let you wrap up on that last part.
Coloradoans age 14 and over drink an average of about three gallons of pure alcohol in 2021, spread off across beer, wine, and liquor. This is the ninth highest consumption rate in the country. As I said a couple of weeks ago, Colorado's increase in alcohol consumption has jumped 60% in the last four years. This is an opportunity for you guys to do the best thing, to show that the higher priority is the advancement of our city, not the degradation of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this application? Okay. If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anthony Latier, 2900 Memorial Drive. I second most of what Galen just said, but my biggest concern, I guess, is we're having all these firework issues and we're understaffed for it. What assurances, I guess, it's not a question, I guess it's just more of a statement, what assurances that we can protect against DUI or over-excessive drinking or any issues is that? And agreeance with all those statistics and everything, with the amount of depression and anxiety we have in our, basically, society and everything. My concern is, is, is people drinking and driving, it's a very dangerous and very rapidly growing problem, not only in most of the state, but in other areas as well. So that's just my concern to voice, is if we can't handle the amount of 911 calls we get from fireworks, it's just respectfully, my opinion, that it's almost kind of scary and kind of concerning if we can't be able to keep track of the number of drinking while driving or any other issues we may encounter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak against the application tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this application that hasn't already spoke? Seeing none, I will close the floor for discussions for the public. Moving on to questions and clarifications. Anybody have any questions or would like to have some clarifications to any of the information that was provided? Do you have to close the public session? No, not yet.
Not yet.
I do have a question. Jane, Karen, do you guys have a designated driver that will be driving your clients or customers?
We don't, our insurance won't allow that, but there is, we do have some numbers and people who will help.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant or public?
I've got a question. Looking at the maps, and then I'm looking on page seven of eight on the modification premises of addition, it says that you're going to fence in the parking lot and the street. Is that correct?
Yeah, we go from the corner of the bar out and then around the grass area, and then I think it's 25 feet and the weather trap, and then across to the alley.
Okay. I've never been to an event, is that how it's been in the past, where you guys fence off the street as well?
Yeah, we put a six-foot king and bench down the road.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was just a safety concern, because when I was looking at it, I saw that it was cone off the street, but now that I'm reading, it says that it's going to be fenced off and, you know, and that was just the question I have, a safety concern. But if it's worked in the past, you know, then I would say it's been a problem.
Then we have emergency entrance coming off of Main, and then another one coming off the bridge, just on both sides, they'll be emergency entrance.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
No, this is the same diagram that they've had.
In years?
Yeah.
In years? Okay. Yeah. I just saw that, and I said, okay, well, I read earlier that looks like it's cones, but now it's worth fencing it off.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Daniel? Got it?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So I'll open it up for discussion or for a motion, but the city council, for the city council, on this public hearing. Do we have any discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, they haven't had any problems in the past. And the way they've fenced it off, it seems to have worked.
And I know I've gone in the past to some of them, and it's very well-protected and everything, and I never seen any problems.
And I think one of the things we need to remember, and we just had this training a little bit ago, is that, you know, we have to base our decisions upon the information that's provided, on the legal statutes for the state as well, for the liquor license, and determining whether or not they are following the practices and procedures. So any other comments or questions or discussion?
I move to approve the temporary modification of premises to Buzzard's Roots and give permission to use city property.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the temporary modification and to give permission to use the city property. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Motion passes. Okay. Now we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the oath of office for our new chief of police. Thank you all for attending.
So he's not reading that one, he's just reading this one.
Yeah, that's him. That's him to look at, and then there's yours to read from.
Okay. Rob, would you like to start with anything or say anything?
I know that I've been looking forward to getting Al up here. I really have. I know that we've been, some of the additional, I work at Jameson, so that was a good thing, but bottom line is, I'm glad to get you here. We're really looking forward to getting your expertise and your experience and helping us address the priorities of the council and getting, getting things done. So thank you very much.
So we'll go ahead and do the oath of office and get you started. I have two copies here, one for me and one for you.
Excellent.
So if you'd like to come around over here, we'll do the oath of office.
I didn't use 27 years ago.
So if you'll please raise your right hand. I, Al Fitter, do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America as a state of Colorado.
I, Al Fitter, do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America as a state of Colorado.
I will faithfully and impartially enforce the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances of the city of Lamar.
I will faithfully and impartially enforce the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances of the city of Lamar.
And do further swear to discharge the duties as chief of police for the city of Lamar, Colorado, to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God.
And do further swear to discharge the duties of chief of police for the city of Lamar, Colorado, to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. You want to, you have a signature there?
Yeah.
All right. It's official.
Thank you.
You'll hold up for a bit. Thank you very much. But you'll stay up for just a few seconds. Here's this for you, Linda.
Thank you.
I know Rob and I had talked earlier, and we want to welcome you as a council to the city of Lamar, and thank you for accepting the offer to become the chief of police. I think that's on behalf of everybody on the council.
Yes, welcome.
If you'd like to say anything, or?
Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
What he, what Rob said was just an understatement. I think the community also is excited.
Very good.
To have you here. Thank you for choosing Lamar.
I'm glad today is finally here, even though I'm on the end of going on a 13-hour day already, but it's well worth it. It's been a roller coaster of a day, and we're already putting out fires as much as we can, and, and moving forward with our, our vision and mission for the department. So I'm very excited to be here, and I'm looking forward to the future.
Great. I know there was a few items that we have talked about with Rob, and moving forward with a new fresh start for our community. I know as a council, we, I wanted to open it up for some suggestions, recommendations. Over the last few years, I know we've had some struggles and want to change some of the direction that we're going. I think for me, as one of the members, one of the seven members of the council, I know I'd like to see a little bit more, how can I put this, some more focus and emphasis on our Main Street with traffic and the speeding that's happening on Main Street. I think that's been a big concern. I think some of the information that we've received as far as, you know, the ability for our officers to improve on their skills, including de-escalation and things of that nature, I think that's, those are all very prominent on our minds. We had the discussion earlier about the fireworks displays, or the firework issues, and I know that's a challenge for you, coming into a smaller community and trying to balance how many officers you have with what budget you have. Rob had also mentioned earlier about trying to recruit new officers, so I think there's a lot of challenges that you'll be facing over the next, you know, upcoming 100 days, so to speak. I know, as most public officials, we do a 100-day goal thing, and I had asked Rob earlier if it would be possible to work with you to kind of develop a plan of targets and direction for the next 100 days, and where you want to go, where you want to see things moving for the future in Lamar, and I think that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Council, what do you guys think?
Do you want to start?
As far as things for focus on, yeah, I'll start with.
Um, one of the big ones for me is drug enforcement. I know we didn't get to talk a whole lot at the meet and greet. I was on my way out, but we did get to speak on drug enforcement, as well as locating alternate resources to help with bringing down some of the larger distributors and the people bringing it into town. I'll pivot off what Kirk said, and focusing on Main Street to slow down semi-truck traffic. I know I travel a lot through the Plains and the Front Range. We all know which towns you don't speed through, and I would like to see us get to a point where those semi-trucks know that they don't speed in Lamar, with how tight our Main Street corridor is, and with policing, so that we can get those guys slowing down and in turn make the community feel a little safer in that sector. Another big one for me is going to be dealing with some of the code enforcement and giving direction to code enforcement to kind of clean up some of the blight and the abandoned vehicles. And there's a few others that I look forward to being able to discuss with you in the future, but those ones are some, some strong points for me.
Thank you very much.
Daniel?
I think public perception and public interaction, I think this Friday, having a meet and greet, it's going to be a good start for that.
Yes.
But I really think that, you know, just kind of working on getting that interaction with the public is going to be really good for our community, coming in from out of town, you know, the people want to get to know you.
Yes.
Get to know what you're about and feel confident, so I think that's going to be a good part.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, thank you for taking on the job.
You bet.
Hopefully to see a little bit of changes. I know it don't, it won't be that fast, it'll take some time, but Brent had it well said just now, you know, just hopefully we head in the right direction. And again, thank you for taking this on.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Oh, no, you don't want to know. I'm just joking.
Keep it simple.
Thank you for taking a position, and I would like to see, and I know it's hard being, having good customer service as an officer, but there's times that you can, and I know there's times you can't. And I would like to see our officers get involved more with the community, not just for DUIs, not just for domestics, but to show that they are human and they can get along with everyone and
Yes.
Just have that good customer service when they need to.
I agree completely. Thank you.
Well, welcome. Sorry. Welcome to Lamar. I'm excited that you're here, and I was just going to actually reiterate, really, drug enforcement is something that's always been heavy on my mind, so.
Yes. I was actually, I don't mean to interrupt everybody, but it's one of my passions, is drug addiction, and I was a trainer for that back in Iowa, so I'm very much looking forward to that aspect as soon as we get our numbers up for our staff members, which is looking really good right now, so I'm really happy about it. Sure?
Well, I think we're all on the same page with the drugs and the PR with our public.
Yes.
And I, I think it's very important to each and every one of us, you know, Brent made some good points that, on speeding, you know, if a trucker's going through Lamar, you know, what towns, what not to speed in. Well, I'd like for those here in Lamar to know that this is a town that when you are packing the illegal drugs, this is an area where it's not going to get tolerated. I do know that there are certain areas or the laws are have rewritten where the criminals, you know, can get away with this stuff, but at least if they're being put through the process over and over and over again, maybe at some point in time, they'll get tired of that and then understand that Lamar's not a place where it's going to get tolerated, you know. For me, so I think that's very important for us.
I agree completely.
And one more point, at one point in time, the police department had a program for the citizens, which was called the Citizens Academy. At some point, I would like to see that come back to where, you know, the citizens can get involved with the police department and actually understand what you guys go through as law enforcement and understand the rigors and the safeties that you guys deal with. That way, on a PR level, they can kind of understand and have empathy for what you guys actually do.
I completely agree. Actually, that's a topic that Jerry and I discussed.
Yeah.
The night of my interview. Remember that?
Yes.
We talked about that being one of the first things on my plate, is to start a Citizens Academy. And I would, I would love for all of you to be one of some of our first members of that, first group, because that way you guys would have a better idea of what we do as police for the city of Lamar. And a lot of things that you've already mentioned, I have it in my notebook today, I wrote down three pages of things that I want to work on already just in one day. So we're all on the same page, and I want to start more of a social media presence. So we have a Facebook page that's going to be created this week, and be more transparent with the community members. That's my goal, is to work hand-in-hand with the community. And also regarding the drug enforcement, when, when and if the criminal element choose to come to Lamar, I want them to be looking over their shoulders. I want them to be a little nervous when they see a squad card in their rearview mirror, because we're going to have zero tolerance for that kind of activity in Lamar.
Right on. Thank you for that.
You bet.
I do have two more things, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I keep it short. The, they used to have, where they really enforced it of these people that, and it's more in the summertime, they ride their bikes with the backpacks, no lights, and it hasn't been anymore, because I've almost hit some of them coming home.
Yeah.
You know, and that's dangerous.
You bet.
So I think they need to reinforce that also.
Sure.
Look into it.
Yeah.
And then the vehicles that continue to park on the side, they're not supposed to.
I agree. I agree. I can tell you that those are definitely a priority for the police department. We're going kind of through a transition right now with us being down, I don't want to give the exact numbers out for everyone to know, but we are down a number of officers. And then on top of that, we have a number of officers that are off injured or on light duty. One of our officers was involved in a motorcycle accident this last weekend. So we are down to about half our numbers, and we are at a skeleton crew right now. So I am working very, very hard this week to get a lot of offers out to our applicants that we have. So we have four spots in the academy coming up in August, and I plan on filling every single one of them. So recruitment and retention is at the top of my list right now.
Thank you.
Well, as a council, we don't, we don't like to micromanage. We have the city administrator to do that.
Yes.
But since this was a new, you know, we're trying to just give direction for Rob to work with you on.
Yep.
I think as a community, for me, this is my 15th year on the council. And when I started on the council, everybody complained to me that the police were just harassing everybody.[1799.50] They were pulling everybody over on Main Street and it was just awful. And then it went from that to the police never do anything because, you know, we decided to lighten it up. And then it went back to we were being too hard and now we're back to a situation where the police aren't doing anything, is what the perception is.
Sure.
And the reason why I wanted to have this discussion out in the open session and have the council give direction is because I wanted you to hear the direction and as we move forward, I want the community to understand that we're doing this from a public safety standard. It's not because of quotas, it's not because we're picking on people, it's not because we don't want people in Lamar. This is a public safety issue and I think the council has been unanimous in saying this is the direction we want to go, we want to start to firm up things and start to make our community or keep our community as a safe place. Is that fair to say, everybody?
Yes.
So moving forward, working with Rob, we're looking forward to what you have to bring to the table. I think you're right on target with the public relations. I'm not saying that our officers have never done anything, but they have done a lot of things that they really haven't taken credit for. There have been drug busts that we don't even know about because they try to keep it under the wraps or they try to keep it from going into the public. Hopefully, we can change some of that, we can let the public know what's happening, what changes are being made and be more transparent with the community as we move forward, because I think that'll really help to change the perception of our police department because we have a great police department.
Yes, we do.
We really have a great group of members in there and I'm looking forward to having you lead it.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Okay, Al, did you want to add anything before we move on?
He's a really good person at speaking, public speaking, and I plan on leaning over him, so.
Great.
Very good.
Great. Okay, we'll move on with the rest of the meeting and the next item on the agenda is approval by council of the 2025 budget calendar. Kristen, this is up to you.
Well, it's that time already.
Yes, it is.
So we're moving forward on our budget, 2025 budget process. This is the first step. Rob and I sat down and went through the calendar, talked about it. It doesn't change a whole lot from year to year. We have to follow, of course, state rules in our charter as far as dates hitting certain dates. But we do have a couple of work sessions that are scheduled, one in August and one in September. If we start in the process and you decide we need to have some more, we'll add some, whenever it fits in your schedule, but we're just asking that you approve this so that we can move forward with our process.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions for the council on the budget process and the dates that we have scheduled?
Wasn't there one of these steps last year that we decided to move to a non-council meeting night as it would take longer than a work session would allow, I'm just trying to remember.
And the one that I'm thinking is the 9/23 one, the operating budget, that one kind of takes a little bit longer. Rob and I used that first one, him and I, to get direction from you, what is your priorities? So, you know, I am absolutely not opposed to moving that 9/23 meeting to, you know, a night where we don't have a council meeting.
So the 9/23 one, the second meeting in September generally is where we start carving things and stripping it down a little bit more and making it firmed up.
Right.
I think after we have that first one, if it's okay with you, Brent, maybe we have the first one, see how many challenges we may have and then decide from that point.
Yeah, and then we can just do a, you know, whatever night works for you, Monday or something, just have a special meeting and just have a work session where we can just focus on it and not have any time constraints.
So we can still come back and modify the date of the 9/23?
Yeah, and those things are statutory or charter, so those things we can adjust as we see fit. Okay, so those aren't hard, you know, in stone, written in stone. Those are things that can be adjusted according to our need.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, because we might see that first one, that there's no question that we're meeting the budget might not have any problems, but.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 budget calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number four, moving right along. Amendment resolution number 24-04-01, which repeals section 6 of the donated leave and replace it with chapter 3, section 6, for the sick leave sharing program in the city of Lamar Personnel Policy Handbook. This is initiated by Rob Evans and Margaret Saldana, our HR manager. Margaret, it looks like you're going to present this tonight?
Yes, so as you all know, we've been refining the donated sick leave policy. I was sitting back in the room trying to think when we started this process and I think it was January, so I feel really happy that we're here tonight. And so what I'd like to, what I'm asking the council to do is to just repeal chapter 3, section 6 of the Personnel Policy Manual, which is stated as donated leave and replace it with a new section 6 called Sick Leave Sharing Program. And what we hope to accomplish with this resolution is that the sick leave sharing program will create a formal program for employees to voluntarily donate a portion of their sick leave to an ongoing leave bank for future distribution or to an individual employee who has exhausted their own leave reserves. And it will also create a process for employees to apply for donated leave for their own personal or eligible family members incapacitating an extended illness of injury. And it also will create a process for reviewing such applications because we're going to have a sick leave sharing board, review board, that consists of the city administrator, the city clerk and the city treasurer or their designees. And all city employees can donate and or draw from the sick leave sharing bank or receive direct donations at any time during their employment, provided they follow the application guidelines as outlined in the sick leave sharing program policy. And where employees who do not meet eligibility, they may request an exception by submitting an appeal and writing to his or her director and the sick leave sharing board, review board. And so, again, I'm asking that council repeal chapter 3, section 6, the sick and replace it with the sick leave sharing program. And that would be, once it's approved, we would amend the Personnel Handbook. Copies will be distributed to all employees. In the packet there is the policy and the procedures that is currently under legal review. It's being reviewed by legal counsel, I don't think Lance has had an opportunity to take a real good final look at it, as we discussed in the work session. And it also, I've also sent it to another legal counsel, employers' counsel for their review to also look at the application and everything else. That way, once that's all good to go, then that will be shared with the employees. It'll be posted on the website, on our city of Lamar website and it'll be good to go to start promoting this to our employees and letting them know that they have that opportunity to donate and to also take advantage of the program if they're in need of it.
This is something we had the work session on at the last meeting.
Yes.
So the council has had an opportunity to discuss it with you and review it. Were there any additional questions or anything for the council?
I don't have any.
Rob, do you want to add anything?
No. We received some guidance. We now are taking the steps to implement it.
So would a motion need to be made pending Lance's final review?
That's the resume.
Or have you already reviewed it?
I have not, I was, I was under the impression that it was going to employers' council, which Margaret mentioned, I wasn't aware of whether they've provided feedback yet.
It'll be this week, talked to Jesse at employers' council and she, because of the holidays, she'll have a review by the end of this week, so it'll go to you.
And I wasn't sure, I know, I feel like this has kind of been evolving for a while. I know Margaret, over the last month or so, has refined it with Kristen and Linda and everyone's kind of worked on this, Rob and but I don't know that I've seen the most recent version of what they expected what the change is going to be going forward. I've worked on it several months ago, but I haven't had an opportunity to fully review the current.
I can bring it back. Next time for after legal review.
Okay, so you'd rather have a legal review or just approve pending your review?
Well.
I guess I was asking that question.
It's hard for me to say that it's going to be, you know, say, minor changes without fully knowing everything in it. I don't want to delay it, but I feel like major issue was mitigated a few months ago and I know everyone wants to move forward with this, I'm just not comfortable without having an opportunity to fully sit down and view this.
Right. Rob, will it create problems if we table it?
No, I mean, we weren't, I'm hoping we don't have these type of requests come up right now. If something happens in the next two weeks, then we'll deal with it. It would have to be an exception to policy, but.
Well, we already have in place we can give direct donations, so that's an option right now, so. Until we can get this bank, we won't have any time in it anyway. So right now, we'll go with what we've been doing for the last two years.
Well, what I was going to suggest is could we at least approve what's going into the handbook, the section, and not necessarily wait until Lance approves the application and the policy and procedures, which goes into more detail?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and suggest we just.
Table it?
Let him take a look at it, we table it till next time.
I'll make a motion to table it.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to table it until a future meeting. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Just with the scale of this, I don't want us to miss anything.
Oh, no, I totally understand.
Unanimous in favor of?
If employers' council goes back the eye, just, you can send me the most recent version.
Okay, will do, thank you, thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, do we have any miscellaneous items? Looks like we do.
I do. And I just want to say as a dad, I know this is not normal procedure, but as a dad, I want to say I'm proud of my daughter. She got accepted into an early college program today and she's been really wanting this, so you can hear it from her daddy's proud of.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Okay, any other miscellaneous items for the council?
I had one other thing that I failed to mention in my report. We are going forward with the Tyler implementation. I wanted to let you know that we are continuing to do that. They sent me some assessment questions, I guess, several pages when I was gone to CML. We've been working on those on different modules, the first modules that'll go into place. Once we get those all returned, they have scheduled, I'm going to say seven to nine meetings with me, Thomas, Linda. We'll start involving Rob as it comes up. These are just sort of kickoff, we're going to start setting the schedule, you know, what models we're going to implement first and who all needs to attend this and this and this. And so I just wanted you to know that we are moving forward on that and moving along with it, so it's going to be quite the process, so. We are going forward and I appreciate you guys voting for us to have new software, so.
Good to know. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Seeing none, we, next item on the agenda is we have an executive session for the discussion of personnel matter under CRS, section 246402 subsection 4 subsection F, which is for the mid-year staff review of the city administrator. There will be no decisions coming out of this executive session, so we will immediately adjourn the executive session or the meeting after the executive session. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to enter into the executive session. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Hit the wrong button.
He didn't hit the wrong button, he really did mean yes. He wants to stay, bro.
All right, we will move into the executive session. Next city council meeting will be Monday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM. We hope to see you then, thank you very much and have a good night.